I would like to call this special village board meeting of Thursday, January sixteen, twenty twenty five to an end. Will the clerk please take the role?
President Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Meritado?
Here.
Trustee Pogge?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Please stand and join me in saying.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal liberty and justice for all.
Next is a public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this for own an agenda item on? Anyone from the public? None? A new business discussion of approval of fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five mid-year budget. Uh, Dr. Ben Smith, please. Don't fall on you.
I'm fine to yield the floor.
Is a motion to approve? No. No? Oh, so why are you there?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, trustees. It's always a pleasure to be in front of you to speak about budget stuff and other matters. So this evening I'll be presenting the second quarter proposed amendments to the fiscal year twenty twenty five village budget. If you had your workbook with you, some of you may have gotten it last Thursday. You can follow along. I am the presenter tonight. If you have questions regarding operations, my esteemed executive staff fellow members can answer operational questions, and I'm sure that they will be anxious to answer your questions. As a general rule, we look at where we've come from and where we're expecting to go. Budget was approved this past April. The first quarterly budget adjustments were approved by the board back in August. Then we have tonight's review. The next review will occur in March, and then the final review will occur in June. This is the big picture summary by fund. In the cases where there's a negative balance, and you see a few of those, I'm showing you the reserve position as stated in the FY twenty twenty four audit, and that reserve will be used to cover any negative balances in funds. The principal assumptions that drive the proposed second quarter revenue adjustments are based on data that's available at the time, including actual receipts for the first three or four months of the year. We also use revised estimates that are released from both the Illinois Municipal League and the Illinois Department of Revenue. We're recommending to increase our general fund's revenue estimates by one million fifty-nine thousand six hundred and seven dollars. In keeping with the board's direction from last year, we will go fund by fund, looking first at revenues by category, and then move to the expenses by division. All along the way, we'll show you the current budget, the number of changes, the proposed amended budget, and then a description of what's causing the change. So let's go. In the category of general fund tax revenues, these are revenues other than property tax. There are seven changes, and these are the changes. For state shared income tax, which is also called the LGDF, local use tax, and the cannabis excise tax, we're making these budget adjustments based on the revised forecast from the Illinois Municipal League. So for LGDF, we're increasing the budget by sixty-four thousand six hundred and ten dollars. The local use tax, we're decreasing that budget by one hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred two dollars. The cannabis excise tax budget is being increased by three thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars. Food and beverage taxes, we've had enforcement efforts and back taxes collected. We're increasing that budget by seventy-five thousand dollars. The Mark apartment complex was sold last year, and we're increasing the real estate transfer tax line item by one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Video gaming is showing a positive trend compared to our estimates. We're increasing that budget by forty thousand dollars. And excise tax, which is showing the impact of wireless services, we're decreasing that budget by eighty thousand dollars. In the category of license and permit revenues, there are five changes, and these are the changes. Scavenger licenses, we had two companies who merged, so we're decreasing that revenue line item by fifteen hundred dollars. Business licenses, we had revenue collected before the renewal period, so the budget was increased by three thousand dollars. Video gaming licenses, we have a hundred and twenty-two renewals coming up. That budget's been increased by two thousand dollars. Entertainment permits, we had one business that's not renewing their permit, decreasing that budget by four hundred and fifty dollars. And vehicle overweight permits from the police department, we have increased enforcement. We're increasing that budget by twenty-five thousand dollars. The category of charges for services, there are six changes. These are the changes. In courtroom rental, the agreement with the county terminated on December thirty-first, so we're decreasing that budget by twenty-five thousand dollars. Parks usage fees, the camera park soccer field's not ready, so we're decreasing that budget by forty thousand dollars. Franchise fees, we have a continued migration away from cable TV services to streaming services. We're decreasing that budget by eighty thousand dollars. Reinspection fees, we overestimated. We're decreasing that budget by a thousand dollars. Public hearing fees, we're correcting the original budget and decreasing it by twenty-five hundred dollars. Zoning verification fees were overestimated, and we're decreasing that budget by one hundred dollars. In the category of fines and forfeiture revenue, there are three changes. These are the changes. In compliance tickets, we underestimated, so we're increasing that budget by fifty thousand dollars. Local DUI prosecution, our actual collections to date and our estimated additional collections caused the budget to be increased by four thousand dollars. Local ordinance violations were underestimated. We're increasing that budget by ten thousand dollars. In the category of interest income revenue, we've had higher interest rates that have been paid on the Village of Savings account for a longer period than we expected. We're increasing the budget one million dollars. The current bank interest rate that's paid as of December thirty-first was four point eight five percent. It's been over five percent, and the savings account balance at December thirty-first is a little over forty-two million dollars. In the category of other income, there are no adjustments, but just so you know, that what's in the category of other revenue are grants at five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, towing and impound fees at a hundred thousand, school resource officer billings is two hundred nineteen thousand. We have some police restricted accounts. There's fifty-three thousand dollars budgeted in there, and a hundred and eight thousand dollars in everything else that's just miscellaneous revenue. The general fund also has a revenue line item identified as transfers in. These are monies that come into and out of the general fund, and we call it transfers. There's no change in that line item. So in all, there's a net revenue increase in the general fund of one million fifty-nine thousand six hundred and seven dollars. If there aren't any questions, I will move on to the expenses. In the general fund expenses by division for the mayor and village board, there are no changes. In the village clerk's division budget, there are no changes. In the committees and commissions budget division, there are no changes, but I just want to note that the committees and commissions are made up of the police commission, the plan commission, the historical house, and the youth commission. There are no changes. In village administration, we're all in the general fund now. There are three changes. These are the changes. We added overtime for a transcraving project, increasing the budget by two thousand dollars. And we added principal and interests for the leased vehicle and a copier. We increased that budget sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars. In the human resources division, there are no changes. In the public relations division, there are two changes. These are the changes. The character generator warranty extension and TV monitor programming budget was increased by two thousand dollars, and the department wishes to buy a GoPro camera, increasing that budget by four hundred dollars. In the central services division, there are eleven changes. Here are the changes. Opt-out insurance is an expense that was recognized in central services. It's now charged to individual departments, so we decreased that budget by fifty-two thousand dollars. We reduced medical insurance because our renewal was less than we estimated, decreased the budget by thirty thousand dollars. We reduced legal expense based on trend. Budget decrease was fifty thousand dollars. We erroneously duplicated the budget for the historic house alarm monitoring. We decreased that budget by twenty-five hundred dollars. We obtained lower pricing for floor mat service at Village Hall. We decreased that budget by three thousand dollars. The new video system support cost increased, increased that budget by thirteen hundred dollars. We have telephone line monthly costs. They've been reduced. We're decreasing the budget by eight thousand dollars. We increased the lease cost because we bought a new postage machine. Increase, the budget is six hundred dollars. Copier rental expense, which is recorded as principal and interest within each department, that budget was decreased by five thousand dollars. The fees we paid to collection agencies caused the budget to be increased by thirteen thousand dollars, and the new telephone system was overestimated in its budget. We're decreasing that by fifteen thousand dollars. Just one moment. In the police administration budget, there is one change. The change relates to uniform reimbursements that were all charged to administration that are now charged to the individual police divisions. That's a decrease to the budget of twelve thousand dollars. In the patrol division of the police department, there are four changes. These are the changes. Manpower shortages result in an impact to the budget of a decrease of three hundred thousand dollars. There's additional overtime needed as a result of the manpower shortage. That budget is increased twenty-five thousand dollars, and uniform reimbursements that we said now are charged to departments, that budget is three thousand dollars. The Axon Agreement renewal adjustment caused the budget to increase six thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. In the investigations division of the police department, there's one change related to uniform reimbursements that are now charged to that department. We increased that budget by seven thousand dollars. In the support division of the police department, there are two changes. Salary projections included the allocation for the deputy chief, and he was paid out of administration. The budget decreased fifty thousand dollars, and uniform reimbursements again that are now charged to the department, we increased that budget by two thousand dollars. In the community policing division, there are no changes. In the grants and donation division of the police department, there's one change. We added funding for major repairs to the gun range ventilation system, increased the budget fifty thousand dollars. In the finance department, best department within the village, there are twenty changes. Twenty changes? Here are the changes. We have additional funds for a summer office worker that was filling in for our accounting technician. The salary benefit budget increased eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. We had an employee who changed insurance coverage that increased the budget by five thousand five hundred dollars. Staff didn't attend the state finance conference. The budget was decreased two thousand dollars. We have additional funds for vehicle sticker, I'm sorry, we have additional funds for the purchasing agent to become recertified. That budget was added at five hundred dollars. We had fewer vehicle sticker renewal notices sent out. That budget decreased two thousand dollars. We acquired furniture and equipment for the finance department. That budget increased four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. We purchased a language translator for front counter staff. Budget increased five hundred dollars. The Tyler Munus Financial Software Agreement, which was budgeted and approved in April of twenty twenty four, is being rebudgeted, and that increase to the budget is two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Finally, in the finance department, principal and interest expense for our copier is increasing the budget by one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. In the community development administration division, there are eight changes. These are the changes. Position vacancies, salary and benefits caused the budget to be decreased by one hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars. Training expense was overestimated. We decreased the budget by three hundred dollars. Additional costs for twenty twenty-one code books, the budget was increased seventy-three dollars. Office equipment that was purchased last year, but budgeted this year, we decreased the budget by one thousand dollars. Membership in Choose to Page was a net increase to the budget of four thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. In the inspection division of the community development department, there are eight changes. These are the changes. We had net staffing vacancies and promotions. The salary and budget decreased by forty-one thousand sixty-two dollars. Training and education budget was more than estimated. The budget was increased six hundred and thirty-six dollars. License and certification expenses were overestimated. We decreased the budget by eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. We have savings for more fuel-efficient vehicles. We decreased that budget by five hundred and twenty-four dollars, and general operating expenses were overestimated. We decreased the budget by nine hundred dollars. In the public works administration division, there are nine changes. These are the changes. The director's position with it being vacant, the salary and budget impact is a decrease of sixty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Be aware that we'll hear this comment again when we get to the environmental fund because the director's salary is allocated fifty percent to the general fund, fifty percent to the environmental fund. We had additional gas fuel funds needed for the engineer. Budget increased four hundred dollars, and we delayed new vehicle for the division and decreased the budget four thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars.
So this is a fifty percent, correct?
That's correct.
The sixty-nine thousand, we are going to see that?
Yes.
So right now, who's performing that? I think, Mr. Jeff, you are doing the job of the director as well?
Doug's technically in charge. I oversee day-to-day operations.
Oh, okay.
In the streets division, public works, there are eight changes. These are the changes. We have position vacancies and other salary adjustments. The salary and benefit budget was decreased by ninety-six thousand sixty-five dollars. We had an increase in uniform and boot allowances because of the new contract. Budget increased four hundred and ninety-five dollars. We bought pedestrian solar lights for school crossings. We increased the budget by seven thousand fifty-two dollars. Unit number five sixty-six, which is a six-wheeler, we put on the enterprise vehicle schedule instead of an outright purchase, so the budget decreased eighty-five thousand dollars. We added a lift gate to unit five seventy, which is a F-two-fifty truck. We increased the budget by forty-five hundred dollars. The net impact to add unit five sixty-six, which is a five-ton truck, and defer unit five seventy-two, which is an F-two-fifty truck, was a net decrease to the budget of fifteen hundred dollars. We added unit five seventy-one, which is the F-two-fifty truck, to the enterprise program and increased that budget by eighty-six hundred dollars. In the fleets division, public works, there are six changes. These are the changes. There's a part-time mechanic that's being used for upfitting of police vehicles, so there's a salary budget impact that will be partially offset by police vehicle lease expense. Required CFA software training, the budget was increased by twenty-five hundred dollars. We purchased tires for the ESDA vehicle. We increased the budget by five hundred dollars, and we added GPS location service for a truck, and we budgeted, we increased the budget by three hundred dollars. In the parks division, there are twelve changes. These are the changes. The net impact of personnel changes between employees that were paid out of the parks and facilities salary and benefits, that budget increased one hundred fifty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. There was a retirement payout made. The budget was increased thirty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars. Operating in parks and grounds equipment was reduced. The budget was decreased by ten thousand dollars. Uniform and boot allowances increased because of the contract. Budget was increased six hundred and fifty dollars. Electric costs at camera park are being estimated. The budget was increased by ten thousand dollars. There are fewer event rentals, so the budget was decreased in that category by three thousand dollars, and we had savings from the tree removal contract renewal, which decreased the budget by thirty-nine hundred dollars. In the facilities division.
Excuse me, Bill. I got a question. I'm just general fund for the parks. How about camera park, I mean college park with garden? Was that included in this?
That's in a separate.
That is separate? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. In the facilities division, there were seven changes. Here are the changes. The net impact of personnel changes between employees that are paid from parks and facilities, the salary and benefit budget decreased sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars. We removed funds for hand dryers at public works, decreased the budget by twenty-five hundred dollars. There were funds needed for the new wellhouse doors. That budget was increased by twenty-five dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars rather, sorry. We deferred public works siding replacement project, decreased the budget by forty-two thousand dollars, and we removed engineering costs for the rooftop HVAC replacement, decreased that budget by five thousand dollars. In the information services division, there are twelve changes. These are the changes. We added overtime for board meetings and in the video room, we increased the budget by thirty-five hundred dollars. The contract renewal was prescient, caused the budget to be increased by three thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. The net increase for specialized software support increased by five hundred dollars. There's funding that was needed for Park Place software. That budget increased three thousand dollars. There was funding added for Mimecast software service that was approved at the December twelfth, twenty twenty-four village board meeting. The budget was increased twenty-five thousand dollars. We added funding for eight ARC GIS user licenses and increased that budget by three thousand and sixteen dollars. Was funding for GMIS membership. That budget decreased three hundred and fifty dollars, and we removed duplicate funding for leisure services and a computer replacement. We reduced the budget by twenty-five hundred dollars. Just as the general fund transfers in, it transfers out funds to other funds. So there were seven changes to transfers out from the general fund. These are the changes. We increased the transfer to leisure services fund. Because of their mid-year budget adjustments, we added one hundred and thirty-three thousand two dollars. The capital projects fund, we increased to pay for repairs at Nazo's East Baseball Field. That budget increased twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars. We increased the transfer to capital projects to pay for the county required stormwater management work at the camera park soccer field. We increased that budget by one hundred forty-three thousand dollars. We transferred sales tax revenue that's collected in the general fund that's attributable to the Concord Green Shopping Center, transferred that to TIF three. That budget was increased two hundred thousand dollars. We transferred to the Founder's Day Fund to cover fest costs for twenty twenty-four and increased the budget by ninety-eight thousand dollars. And we closed out the computer replacement fund in twenty twenty-four and decreased the budget by fifty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. In all, there's a net expense increase in the general fund of one hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars. The village board heard from our independent auditor back on November twenty-first regarding the condition of village reserves. While it may seem that having reserves to cover almost a year's worth of expenses is too much, taking into consideration the economic outlook for twenty twenty-five and beyond, it would be in the village's best interest to maintain these levels of reserves so that we'll be in a better position to weather a downturn or recession should that occur. Keep in mind that government tends to trail in the national economy, so when there's a recession, if there is one, we won't necessarily feel it immediately. So as proposed, the general fund is expected to put back about three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars back into its reserve fund that would boost the total reserve position to ten months. Any questions? I'm going to move on to other funds. Mindful that I'm almost at seven o'clock. Onto the leisure services fund. Keep in mind that this fund includes special events, senior center services, recreation and golf. In the transfers from the general fund to the leisure services fund, there is one change. We're increasing the transfer from one, we're increasing the transfer by one hundred thirty-three thousand two dollars. So we make all the adjustments in the leisure services fund that we balance it to zero. So the net effect of balancing leisure services caused the general fund to contribute another hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. In the leisure services fund special revenue, special events division, there are no changes. In the senior center revenues, there are three changes. We had higher programming enrollment that increased the budget by two thousand dollars. We had higher than expected snack and coffee revenue that increased the budget by two hundred and fifty dollars, and we have anonymous donations to the center for programming. We increased that budget by thirty-five hundred dollars. In the recreation division, all divisions of recreation, these are the changes. There are sixteen of them. Overall net participation in recreation programs caused the budget to be increased by twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Preschool enrollment was better than we estimated, so we increased the budget by nineteen thousand dollars. Overall aquatic center usage was less than estimated. We decreased the budget by one thousand four hundred and seven dollars. Date camp attendance is less than estimated. We decreased that budget by nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars. After-school program attendance has been better than we estimated. Increased that revenue line item by twelve thousand dollars. In the golf division, there are eight changes. The one change that encompasses eight accounts relates to golf restaurant food and beverage sales, which are better than estimates, and we increased the budget by thirty-five thousand dollars. Rounds plate at the golf course remains strong, as you can see from this year's activity from May through October of twenty twenty-four. On the expense side of the leisure services fund, we have special events first. We moved the salary and benefit budgets from here to recreation administration. We decreased that budget by seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. In leisure services administration, there are six changes. They all relate to salaries and benefits. We're moving all of those again also to recreation administration, decreasing the budget by three hundred and twenty thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars. In the senior center expense side, there are nine changes. These are the changes. We had lower activity guide printing costs. We decreased the budget by five hundred dollars. We replaced a card printer and increased the budget by two thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. There were electrical repairs needed. We increased the budget by three hundred dollars. We repaired the pool table and increased the budget by twelve hundred dollars. We had general equipment repairs that were not needed. We decreased that budget by a thousand dollars. We canceled a subscription and decreased the budget by eighty dollars. We've had higher credit card charges that increased that budget by one thousand dollars. We've had class cancellations, so the instructor budgets have been decreased by five hundred dollars, and we had savings from adult trips that were planned, and we decreased that budget by four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. On the expense side in recreation administration, these are the changes. There are ten. We moved the salary and budget benefits from the division of special events into this division to increase the budget by four hundred thousand five hundred and four dollars, the total combined of what's in special events and administration. Software maintenance fees were less than we estimated. We decreased the budget by two hundred and ninety-five dollars. We replaced a second card printer. In recreation, we increased the budget by two hundred, by two thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Electrical costs have been more than we estimated. We increased the budget by thirty-five thousand dollars, and we also have higher credit card And we also have higher credit card fees here. We increased the budget by ten thousand dollars. In Recreation Programming Division, which includes all programming, preschool, general programming, aquatics, state camp and path, there are forty-four changes. These are the changes. The net overall increase in programming expenses increased the budget by three thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We added salary and benefit supplies for preschool staff, increased the budget sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. We painted the pool last year, budgeted for it this year, decreased the budget by sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. Pool staffing was reduced. The budget was decreased by thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. And date camp wages were less than estimated. We decreased the budget by eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. In the Facilities Division of Leisure Services, there are two changes that nets zero. We had safety door locks that we purchased. We increased the budget by five hundred and sixty dollars. And we reduced plumbing supplies by the same amount, five hundred and sixty dollars. In the Leisure Services Central Services, escrow division, there are no changes. In Leisure Services Golf Administration, there are no changes. In the Golf and Pro Shop, there are three changes. These are the changes. We added funds for uniforms, increased the budget by four hundred dollars. And we re-class temporary wages into regular wages. It was a net of zero, an in and one out, Neil. In the Golf Restaurant Banquet Division, there are eleven changes. These are the changes. We reduced funds for restaurant staffing, decreased the budget by fifteen hundred dollars. We had catering costs for legacy events that were booked. We increased the budget there by thirty-six thousand eighty-nine dollars. Cost of food and beverages were more due to increased sales. The budget increased seventeen thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars. And we have pass-through costs that are paid to Glendale Lake Golf Course that are then paid on to Belgio's. We have offsetting revenue, but we increased the expense budget by forty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars. In the Golf Grounds Maintenance Division, there are three changes. These are the changes. We reduced landscape supplies by three thousand dollars. And we re-class temporary wages to regular salaries, an in and one out the other, a net of zero. That's it for the Leisure Services Fund. In the Emergency Services and Disaster Agency Fund, there are no changes. There are no changes on the expense, on the revenue side rather. On the expense side of the ESTA fund, there are six changes. The changes are the emergency manager position, which has been vacant. The salary and benefits budget decreased by forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We have camera repairs for the command vehicle. We increased the budget by six thousand dollars. And the Computer Replacement Fund, which was closed in the prior year, saved the ESTA fund by three hundred and thirty-two dollars. On the revenue side of the Handicap Recreation Fund, there are no changes. On the expense side of the Handicap Recreation Fund, there's one change. We're transferring Nedstra contribution to the Millennium Park Project. We're increasing the transfer budget by fifty-four thousand and forty-four dollars. In the Motor Fuel Tax Fund, on the revenue side, made two changes that are both related to changes from the Illinois Municipal League. We updated our estimates for the MFT allocation and the Transportation Renewal Fund revenue line items, which resulted in an increase to the budget of thirty thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. On the expense side of the MFT Fund, there are no changes. In the Founder's Day Fund, there are three changes. There's a true-up adjustment for Fest 2024. We decreased the revenue budget by one hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred and forty dollars. The general fund, if you remember, transferred to make up that shortfall. That budget was increased ninety-eight thousand dollars. On the expense side of the Founder's Day Fund, there are five changes. They all relate to true-up, to expenses, to actual for Fest. We decreased that budget by seventy-five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. In the Park Development Fund, there are no changes. Park Development Fund has revenues only, it has no expenses. In the Infrastructure Fund, there's one change. We're deferring a stormwater project to FY 2026, which includes federal and county grants for decreasing the revenue budget, seven hundred nineteen thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars. On the Infrastructure Fund expense side, there are sixteen changes. These are the changes. We had a net change in project engineering, engineering. On multiple projects, we increased that budget by seventy thousand dollars. We reduced the sidewalk project to final actual values. And we removed the CMAP project. We decreased that budget by two hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. A stormwater project was deferred to 2026. We decreased that budget by nine hundred thousand dollars. We moved the CDBG project for the environment, to the Environmental Fund, decreased the budget by six hundred thousand dollars. We reduced the Glen Hills CMP relining budget, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We reduced the James Court Pond Replanting Budget by twenty-nine thousand dollars. We increased funding to the STP West Fullerton Avenue Replacement Project to match the actual payments made and increased the budget one hundred sixty-three thousand three hundred and one dollars. We have seven TIF funds. We have two changes on the revenue side. These are the changes. We adjusted TIF number seven, which is the Army Trail Cavalry Drive TIF, to the actual revenue of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And we transferred from the general fund sales tax collected within the Concord Green Shopping Center. That's a transfer to TIF three of two hundred thousand dollars. On the expense side of the seven TIF funds, there are two changes. We adjusted the redevelopment agreement payment to Duke Realty, which is in TIF number six, the Eastern Glendale Heights TIF, increased that budget by nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which represented a three-year catch-up. And we made the first required payment to ML Realty for TIF seven, which is Cavalry Drive Army Trail Road. We increased the budget by three hundred fifty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. We have eight special service area funds. The revenue budget, there were no changes. On the expense side of the SSA eight funds, there are no changes. In the Capital Projects Fund, there are four changes. These are the changes. The general fund transferred to the Capital Projects Fund to pay for Nazo's East Baseball Field repairs. We increased that budget by twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars. The general fund also transferred to this fund to pay for county required stormwater management work. That budget was increased one hundred forty-three thousand dollars. And the Handicap Recreation Fund transferred into this fund for Millennium Park. That was an increase to the budget of fifty-four thousand and forty-four dollars. On the expense side of the Capital Projects Fund, there are three changes. These are the changes. Nazo's East Baseball Field foul lines and hull plate repairs. The budget was increased twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars. And the county required stormwater management work for the Camera Park Soccer Turf Field was increased by one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. The Death Service Fund, there were no changes. We have revenues of three million four hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and the same amount for expenditures. In the Insurance Fund, on the revenue side, there were no changes. In the Insurance Fund on the expense side, there's one change. We increased broker fees by one thousand dollars. And preparing to move on to the Environmental Fund, do you have any questions? We save the best for last. Good. Environmental Fund revenues, there are three changes. Here are the changes. We expect to issue less water permits than we estimated. We'll decrease the budget by one hundred and sixty dollars. We adjust revenue estimates for water and sewer receipts based on trend and our formulas. We increased the revenue budget ninety-six thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. On the expense side, in Public Works Administration, there are seven changes. These are the changes. This is the other half of the Public Works Director vacancy. Salary and benefits decreased budget by seventy-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. Staff didn't attend a National Water, Wastewater Conference. We decreased that budget by one thousand dollars. We deferred the admin vehicle for this division, decreased the budget by four thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars. And again, the Computer Replacement Fund was closed last year. We decreased that budget by nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. In the Water Division, there are ten changes. Here are the changes. The net impact from the Teamster contract and other wage adjustments, the salary and benefit budget was increased by nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. We increased debris removal costs by three thousand dollars. We increased materials costs by twenty-five hundred dollars. We increased water purchases from the DuPage Water Commission, which were more than we estimated. We increased the budget one hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. We reduced the emergency well number five replace rehabilitation project, decreased the budget by eighty-five thousand dollars. We added the CDBG project at Cambridge and Winchester, Westchester, holy hell. We increased the budget by five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we added funding for water main crossings from the road program. We increased the budget by seventy thousand dollars. In the Sewer Division, there are eleven changes. These are the changes. The net impact from the new Teamster contract and other wage adjustments resulted in an increase to the budget of one thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. We deferred the Gravity Catchment Area Grade Design and Construction Engineering project to FY 2026 and decreased the budget one hundred thousand dollars. We deferred the hydraulic study engineering and decreased the budget by twenty-five thousand dollars. We had debris removal cost increase of three thousand dollars. We had materials cost increase of twenty-five hundred dollars. We added funds for closed-circuit television cellular equipment service, increased the budget by three hundred dollars. We added a replacement truck number six forty-five, which is an F three fifty, and unit number six forty-eight, which is an F four fifty, to the enterprise leasing program. Increased that budget seventeen thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. And we removed the funds for the outright purchase of truck number six forty-eight and decreased the budget by one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. In the Wastewater Treatment Plant Division budget, there are twenty changes. These are the changes. The impact of position vacancies and timing of hiring for salary and benefits resulted in a budget decrease of one hundred eighty-eight thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. There are fewer legal reviews, sorry Peter, of contract pay requests. We decreased the budget ten thousand dollars. The engineering budget was adjusted to actual contract values, resulted in a decrease of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. We had pump repairs that decreased the budget by five thousand dollars. We had cellular service for iPads that increased the budget by four hundred and twenty dollars. We have landscaping painting supplies budget increased by a thousand dollars. And the net impact of a pump motor, belt press, wet well mixer, press room water pump, ODS compressor and influent pump repairs or rebuilds, the budget was increased forty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Don't ask me what any of those things are. In the Fleets Division of the Environmental Fund, there's one change. There was a vector emergency repair that needed to be done. It was twenty-two thousand dollars of increase to that division. In the Central Services Division, there's one change. The opt-out insurance payments were being charged to this division. We changed it to the actual department and increased, decreased rather, the budget by seventy-five hundred dollars. In the Water Billing Division of the Environmental Fund, there are three changes. Here are the changes. The Software as a Service Agreement with Tyler Munis was budgeted and approved in April of 2024. So we're rebudgeting that expense at twenty-six thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. We had increased postage costs that increased the budget by four thousand dollars. And we've had an increased volume of credit card transaction and discount charges from merchants, increasing that budget by forty thousand dollars. This is the end. So with your approval, I will bring a resolution at the first meeting in February that includes all of these adjustments relating to the second quarter budget. And I thank you for your time. I'm sorry that I'm over by fifteen minutes.
Fourteen minutes. Any question? None? Is there a motion to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, mid-year budget? Or position?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? None? Go on, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritano.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder's absent.
Motion to approve FY twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, mid-year budget is approved.
Thank you.
Public discussion agenda items only. Is there, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Anyone from public?
Good evening. Mike Antiveros, Glendale Heights. Looking at the twenty-four budget earlier, Doug or anybody else that wants to answer. We talked about the elimination of the grocery sales tax. What have we done since then to maybe recoup some of those funds that we lost because of COVID, obviously?
Well, the grocery tax expires January first of twenty-six.
Of twenty-six, okay. I thought it was twenty-five, okay. What are our plans then in getting additional revenue to cut?
So we already have a ordinance written to add the grocery tax, because we're home rule, to our code. But we haven't brought that to the board yet because the board's going to have to make that decision sometime, probably in the summer or fall on what they want to do with that task, because it doesn't expire till December thirty-first of twenty-five.
Okay. And then lastly, I don't, and I don't have the line items about expenditures, but what about with the senior center and the security cameras? We talked about that earlier.
Next budget.
It'll be in the next budget for what, twenty-six?
No. The one in May.
The one in May. And what are we allocating for that? Do you have an idea?
We haven't started that budget process yet.
Okay.
Next week, two weeks.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, trustee Light.
Motion to adjourn.
Just me.
Second.
Go on, please.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritano.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.